So, it's a good project. Everybody's happy with it. The state's happy with it. And the agreement is basically just for your information that we are finalized with that process. It still has to be signed by ERC, which is the Energy Resource Center. They're the ones that are gonna be actually doing the work. And then the state will sign off on it once we get approval tonight through council that you guys accepted. It does come with an eighty thousand dollar price tag. We have to supply eighty thousand dollars to the state, who will then give you that money over to the Energy Resource Center so they can do the project. And the project is done. So, with that, I open it up for any questions. We are anticipating, I have a meeting with Charlie next week. And we'll kind of work out how that schedule is supposed to go as far as the payments. But for council, I would plan at the least half this year, half next year. Is probably how it would work, since it is November.
Yes, ma'am.
And council, for the benefit of the audience or anyone that's listening, this, the eighty thousand dollar fine assessed to the city could be used for a project, but the project could not have any direct benefit to the city. And so, we selected Tri-County senior citizens as the recipient with council's approval, that they will get this little solar project up to eighty thousand dollars. And it will help benefit then thirty-three units and those residents there directly at Tri-County. Because they are set up as a nonprofit, and so this will be of benefit to some of our senior citizens in the community.
Very good. Just need council to approve moving forward with the agreement.
I would motion to approve the SEP agreement up to eighty thousand dollars.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the SEP agreement. Final supplemental environmental project. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the final supplemental environmental project with Tri-County State at eighty thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you for everybody that worked on that. Chief, you're up.
That was quick. Gigi, do you need to sign it? So, you have your packet and MOU between Montevista PD and the Rio Grande County Sheriff's Office. Alls this does is solidify a cooperative of us, because everybody's shorthanded. I mean, real quick on that, Eugene and I went to Dallas for International Association Chiefs' Please Conference this weekend. And as I was saying, when we want to have a pity party about how short we are, and, you know, we're the only ones that are short. It is literally worldwide, talking people from Canada and other places. The law enforcement shortage is literally worldwide. So, alls this here is just an agreement between PD, the Sheriff's Office, that solidifies that we will cooperate and work hand in hand to provide services. And one of the things this does is allows us to go outside the city limits. We put a, we put a limit of six, up to six miles outside the city limit to help the Sheriff's Office on like domestics and stuff like that. And we've done that in the past, but that's never really been solidified. So, this, this just allows Gigi to sign the, sign the MOU. And it also kind of gives us a little bit of protection as far as legalities and stuff like that. So, that's really all it is. And there's, there's some benefits in there. The sheriff's gonna start helping us like transport, so we don't have to make the run to Delmore. And it's just better use of our resources to make sure that we're able to fully support what we need to do.
This also means the Sheriff's Department can come into the city and help.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have seen them around a few, a couple of times over the past few days, and it's been very nice to see the cooperation.
Absolutely. With Sheriff Robinson in there, there's, there's a big change in, in the cooperation and stuff, which is, we knew that that would come anyway, so.
It just caught my eye, because I'm not used to seeing sheriff in town, and I've seen that.
Can't miss a couple heads.
I would, a motion to approve the MOU with the City of Montevista and the Rio Grande Sheriff's Office.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the MOU between Rio Grande County Sheriff's Office and the City of Montevista. Is there any discussion? Nita?
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the MOU with Rio Grande County Sheriff's Office and allow for City Manager Gigi to sign.
Okay. Staff Proposals, Reports, and Actions. I have to check. City Attorney.
Is this the section with the three-minute limit too, or is that just citizens?
Okay, I'll be as quick as I can. Municipal Court. Yesterday, we had the nineteenth, we had twenty-six cases on the docket. This is one of the smallest numbers we've had in a long time, frankly. I'm used to like fifty or something like that. In fact, the judge was thinking about going to a second day of muni court or extending it through the whole day based on what happened the time before this in September, when we did have fifty. But she decided to let it kind of settle out with this lower number. We were frankly out of there by noon yesterday. So, this consisted of, oh, mixture of traffic cases. And then offenses consisting of harassments, disorderly conduct, trespass. And obstructing officers, criminal mischief, shoplifting. I think we had virtually a hundred percent convictions on that yesterday, guilty plea, convictions. And so, I don't expect to keep that perfect a record all the time, but that's where it's coming down lately. So, hopefully. It really helps too, I'll say, getting the officer's reports in advance. Because I know, having read those reports and know what the report says, it's a lot easier to recite to the defendants when we take them in the room there and talk to them. What you're telling us doesn't match the report of the officer. And once they see that, they know you got your facts, they're a lot quicker to enter their guilty pleas. So, I think that that's helping a lot to have those reports. So, the MTC, Long Traffic Code, had two notices in the paper, two publications of the ordinance. Hearing set for eleven-three of twenty-two. And approval of the ordinance following the hearing of the approval of that ordinance. And then, the first reading of the ordinance amending the code itself, which would incorporate the ordinance probably at the same time. So, we're on track for that. And all we'll need after that is probably the inventory of the traffic signs and so forth. We'll, as soon as we get that, we'll be able to do a resolution of the council, proving those. In the meantime, with the approved ordinance, we'll go ahead, once that's done, and send that up to CDOT and get their letter of approval, which I anticipate. So, that's in, in process for finality at the November meeting. We've been working on the lease of the parking lot, the city to, from Stampede to the city, with Gigi and Carla Wilshaw. Going back and forth a little bit on the language, because it was a little confusing starting out. But I think we're, I don't see any problems. We can get to pretty quick finality on that. Stagecoach agreement. Sent that to Gigi and then to, to Rio Grande County, to the museum, Lindsay Farrell there. And Gigi had a few little changes tonight that I'll try to send over tomorrow with an amended tender to them. Basically, if they're going to take the stagecoach, we want to retain ownership. And we want them to transport it back to us when we have events like Stampede, if we request it. And Stampede usually will, I think. So, those are the So, those are the provisions that we inserted in there. And in addition to the fact of them doing renovations on the stagecoach. So that's where that is right now. I've been going through my file on the Valley Theater from the get-go, and it's taken me the better part of a day to do that. But I've composed a short history, and that should be on your computers by now. Just so you'll know, you know, how things went down in the publicity and the letters to the editor going in. You'll have that background when you start making final decisions on that. And you'll know what the intent of the donors and the business plan was that was tendered to the city at the time. I'm working on the URA file, and I'll tend to report on its history and the current legal requirements as soon as I can get through that file. It's a long file with a lot of stuff in it, but I'll try to get that to you as soon as I can. I think that Georgia's next priority is probably work on the nuisance code. Like to see some additions and revisions. We've got people running around doing graffiti a lot. And I would mention that Mrs. Farrell contacted me, and she's very appreciative of the fact that you came to see her about that whole thing and got that thing as far as you could investigate it. The Veterans Day Parade is scheduled for Saturday, November the twelfth. Usual parade routes, looks like Scott Deacon's gonna be kind of heading that up. We've been lining up the color guard and that type of thing, so that should go on as usual. Any questions? Hope that was quick enough.
That was fine. I was teasing you.
Why?
I was teasing you. Thank you.
Okay, sir. City Manager reporting.
Of course, it went for both, so. Okay. I don't have a lot to tell you about. I kind of wrote these in backwards order. We had the Small Communities Workshop, was held in Salida here a couple last week. Oh, Mr. Lorenz, welcome.
The real theme.
And DJ, Nita, and I attended that. It was up in Salida, and it was very interesting. And I, you all may have seen in my note from Gigi that, to the employees, that the state demographer had a lot of interesting and kind of aha moments as far as the presentation. So, we may want to get her out here and have her tailor some of the numbers directly to Montevista. Just so we kind of know, know our community a little bit better, as far as how the numbers go. The annual San Luis Valley Development Resources Group and COG Annual Retreat was this last week. Nothing earth-shaking there to report. The Valley Three bid proposals are due to the office by close of business on October the twenty-sixth. So that's this next Wednesday. And then the pres, the public, Nita will get those copies out to you all then. And then the public presentations of anyone that submits a proposal are due back. And that will be part of the November third meet, regular council meeting. And I want to thank Gene for all of the information he did send over, because that was, it was nice to have it all in one context of, of one email, to kind of see what was going on. There was a little old bill passed in two thousand twenty-one called the Plastic Pollution Reduction Act. And this particular bill mandates that our businesses, our commercial businesses will have to collect ten cents on every paper and/or plastic bag. So CML is doing a little confer, a little workshop on it by Zoom on November the second, from eleven to twelve-thirty. I've sent it out to as many of the business people that I know, in case they'd like to come in. We can do Zoom now in our conference room here on the screen, and they can learn all about it. I have not read the full legislation yet, but it sounds like the, the onerous is on the commercial business owner, that they have to buy the bags, and then they have to collect the money for the bags. And then they turn that money back over to the state. So they're not even getting the opportunity to recoup what they spent on the bags to begin with. So, it's kind of crazy. So I, I want as many of our business owners that, that want to come in and listen, as well as the press, so we can get the word out on it, because that's gonna kick in in January. And with that, I am finished. So, any questions?
Appreciate all that you do to stay up to date with everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Council Committee, City Commission, and Council reports. Jason, we'll start with you.
Well, I just spent the week testing wells in the Oklahoma aquifer. And how the aquifer has dropped in that area and how it's decimated their ag community is a sobering reminder of the work that our sub-districts are doing and the well owners are doing to manage and maintain a sustainable aquifer, and how important that is. It is, it's sad. Fields that would have been supplied by one well, it takes ten wells to supply now. And, anyway, that's what I've been up to this week.
Enjoying the fine state of Nebraska, huh?
No, Texas.
Texas, all clear on the tail end of it. I seen a presentation just a couple days ago, and they were talking about Lake Mead and Powell, I think it was. And they showed from twenty, like seventeen to present, absolutely mind-blowing and scary of where we're at. Victor?
I don't have a whole lot. One thing I do want to just address to the community is that Open Gym is open again at the NAS. I think it's like seven o'clock to, I don't know, ten maybe. They were giving me numbers of how many people they had going through there, and there was a ton of kids going through there. It's a very good, I don't know what you would call it, but event, I guess, that happens weekly. There's a bunch of kids out there that really don't have anything to do. You know, they have pool tables and ice hockey tables, I think, and basketball and all that stuff. So, to get the word out, there's some kids that, you know, send them that way.
That's about it. That's all there is. Martha?
I just want to remind everybody, this week is, this coming Friday, tomorrow night, is the third Friday Art Walk for the month. There is a dog costume contest, which just ought to be cute as everything. I'm not sure what the prizes are, but that, that'll be, that'll, that'll be adorable. And then, next Friday, the twenty-eighth, is the Halloween trunk retreat on the first two blocks of Adams Street. Not like trunk retreats that we've had in the past, they've, the nonprofits that have come together to do this are taking it a notch up. And we're gonna have, I don't even know what all they've had planned, but I know they have games for the kids, face painting. There will be prizes and drawings and just all kinds of really great, great stuff. We have three new businesses, and I showed up not knowing the names of all of them, but I would still like to welcome them. On the, on Adams Street at the end, on the east side of Adams and Third. I have to picture it in my mind, that's why I closed my eyes, to know what direction, anything. Anyway, we have a new dog groomer, a dress and gift boutique, and a massage spa. Now, they are not open for business yet, but they are moving in. And so if you walk by there and happen to see them, stop and say hello. And as they get open, I'm going to be encouraging them to come, and at least during Citizens Comments, introduce themselves to us. Let us know that they're there. So, the dog groomer, I know, still has to go through an inspection from whoever inspects dog groomer places. The boutique just isn't all set up yet, and I believe the massage therapist has to go through an inspection too. I'm not, I'm not sure about that. Maybe she already has. But anyway, they're there, and I will announce that Com Shack will be closing. We have had an absolutely wonderful year. It's sad to be closing, it really is, and we had planned to move, just to move the business. But the building that we bought, to move the building to, to move the business to, has rented out so quickly that it just made sense to not pay rent to ourselves, let other people pay rent to us. So, that, you know, that just kind of made sense. I'm not sure where all the equipment's gonna go, but we've got some buyers coming to look at it. So, that, that'll be, it's a good change. It's a, it's a very good change, one I'm very happy about. So those are the things going on downtown. Oh, there are some buildings that some people are starting, on Adams Street, are starting to paint the fronts of their buildings. And go by and talk, go by and look at them and tell them how nice it looks. And let's encourage this, this continuing to make downtown look nice. That's all I got. I ran out of air, Dale.
What time is the, what day is the Halloween thing?
It's the twenty-eighth from, what is it, five, four to nine? What's?
Four to nine.
Four to nine.
Okay, thank you.
Just curious, because you were talking about painting, you know, the, the building across from Dairy Queen, the apartment building? Is there any way that we could like just talk to him and maybe just ask to see if he would paint it? Just curious, I don't know, just a friendly conversation? I don't know. I would talk to him. I just don't know who he is, I, you know what I mean? But, just thinking, cause like, that spa, you know, is just such, it's the main spa, you know, and.
And you made a perfect description of it one night.
I, I just think that, you know, if painted would just look phenomenal, you know? Just make the city look a lot nicer too, I think.
There, there are still some uglies to look at and work on, but here I want to talk about the pretties.
Well, again, credit to the fact that there's a lot of changes as far as painting. That mural on the back of Green Brew's looks very nice. So, that's a plus.
Yep. It's about finished, and, and then with the corporate sponsors that helped fund that, we're gonna kind of do an official little ribbon cutting here in a few weeks, once it's done, so. And then, the lady that kind of has spurheaded the murals, she's been working with the high school art teacher. And she wants to, I saw a picture of it, it's gonna be a beautiful rendition of running horses that will be there on Roger Perry's building, right there, their cross from the.
The old bike, that bike.
Yep.
Across from Dairy Queen?
Yep.
I've been like targeting that place, I'm like, that needs a, something to paint.
So Mr. Perry, who owns the building, has got to do some fixing of the.
Texture.
Texture, yeah, and the stability of it, but it will be really cool.
That's cool. That's awesome. It's good to hear.
It is awesome. Well, this was handed to me. It was Denver Broncos High School Football Coach of the Week. Montevista's very own Manny Wassinger. Every milestone is special in its own way for Montevista head football coach Manny Wassinger. Last week's victory over Ignacio gave him a historic milestone. It was the two-hundred and fiftieth victory in his illustrious coaching career, which also included his hundred and ninety wins of Alamosa, wins at Alamosa. He became just the twelfth coach in Colorado high school football history to reach that milestone. Now Wassinger is looking to add more to his resume as the Pirates head coach. Wassinger has guided Montevista to a perfect seven-o start this season at Class 1A, which is the first time the program has reached the seven-win mark since two thousand seventeen.
That's awesome.
Denver Broncos High School Football Coach of the Week, Montevista's Manny Wassinger, Colorado High School Activities Association. After winning two state championships as the Alamosa head coach, Wassinger is looking to guide the Pirates back to the state title. State title game for the first time since nineteen ninety-nine. Montevista has no state titles in program history, but has four runner-up finishes, so that's awesome.
Let's go Wassinger.
Yeah, definitely.
I've been attending those games, and if you guys get a chance to go to the games, go check them out, man. Like, they're packed, and they're hyped up, and it's exciting to watch, you know? So if you get a chance, go and check them out. Give them three cheers for one high school.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Martinez was here, and I'm sure everybody's seen what had happened to the memorial. And I want to say kudos to Rob and his crew, because I was on Saturday night sometime, Saturday, Sunday morning early, and I knew the police department had a lot to do with it too, but as soon as it got posted, there was furious people, of course. But I was helping my son move, and I was driving by the park, because I wanted to see what, how bad it was, and if they tore it up or just knocked it over. And Rob and Yunita were there, and Rob was on it. That was Sunday afternoon. He said he would make sure it was taken care of come Monday. And I expected a couple days, you know, by the time you get Mr. Glass lined up and everything. And when it was posted that it was back up, kudos to you and what Ronnie said about a small community. Something to be very proud of. So, kudos to you, Rob, and your crew for making sure it got taken care of immediately.
Thank you. You did a lot on that, so.
And the last thing I have is if you see something, say something. You cannot wait for two days to go by and say, oh, you know, there was something going on in the alley, and I didn't turn it in. Then you expect the police department or Sheriff's Department, whoever, to come in and try to figure out what's going on. Don't hesitate. It could be something real petty. You know, just somebody walking where they normally don't walk, but if they're, the PD is called, say, hey, there's something strange going on, and they can get there, they might be able to deter something that was getting ready to happen, or ju, at least find out what's going on. So if you see something, say something. Do not be afraid to say something, because it is our community, and we need to make sure that the criminals go somewhere else. That's all I'm gonna say. Nita, and then my very last thing is, Mark, I'm really upset that you weren't here for the Citizen Comments, so.
I almost forgot, sorry.
You almost made it. And just another thing too, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I want to thank you and for you and everything that you've done with your, with your officers, your patrolmen and all them. Because I, you, you don't, I, I don't hear about them. Know what I mean? Like, I don't hear about them. If you look on social media. If you look on social media, um, policemen are looked at terrible, terribly bad. You know, and there's a good reason for that, know what I mean? But it's not here, it's not here. And I just want to thank you for that, you know, because it's not here, you know? And there's, there's a lot of people like, like I heard Dale say, you know, if you see something, say something, you know? And I feel one hundred percent comfortable with all of our officers here in town that will come in and serve you. Know what I mean? And, and not like harass you or, you know, the way, you know, that, that, that it could be, you know? So, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, we will adjourn the meeting until November third, six P.M., right here.